Okay. So I guess we'll get this session underway so that everyone can go to the gala party and enjoy themselves later on. So, welcome to the microbiome and HIV session. My name is Ralph Panflet and I'm happy to introduce the list of speakers today. I am organizing, or this session was organized, co-organized by myself and Jimmy D'Acqua, the co-chair for the basic sciences track. We came up with this idea that because the microbiome is, plays an important role in human health, that a session like this, sort of giving you an update on what the microbiome is, if you don't know what that is, and how it's important to protecting us against infection and how it controls or influences our immune response, might be, might be of interest. So, we'll have three speakers today. Lisa Osborne, Adam Burgenner, and Sharu Kaushik. And I'm very pleased to introduce them. We, each speaker will have about 25 minutes, and then we'll have maybe a few minutes for immediate questions, if you have any. Otherwise, what we'll do is, at the end, after everyone has spoken, have sort of a panel session to take questions and to discuss. So, without further ado, it's my pleasure to introduce Lisa Osborne. We invited Lisa because she doesn't do HIV or HIV research, but does do work on the microbiome, and we thought that would be a good place to start, to just introduce you to the microbiome and what it is. So Lisa will be talking a little bit about her work and by that introduce you to the microbiome. Lisa is an assistant professor at UBC, and, yeah, she'll tell you about what she'll be talking about. The title of her presentation is up on the screen.
Thanks. Thank you very much. I don't know if this works. I'm definitely going to use that one. Okay. Okay. So, thank you Ralph and Jimmy for the introduction. I will apologize in advance, something's going on with my throat, so I sound very awful. You have to put up with it. So, yes, so today, what we're going to talk about theoretically is the intestinal immune system and how interactions between the bugs that live within us influence our immune response to infections. So, the mammalian intestine, we know that it is this dynamic interface between the host and the external environment, and it's tasked with a very important job. Basically, we, the immune system has to be continuously tolerant to the innocuous antigens that we face on every day. So, the colonizing species, food antigens that we intake. But at the same time, it has to be poised and ready, because this is the site, a major site of pathogen infection. So, when those pathogens come into our, into our bodies, our immune system, the underlying immune system in the intestine, has to be ready to respond. So, this balance is definitely very important. And usually, at this point, this is where I transition to, when it goes wrong, we result in things like intestinal inflammatory bowel disorders. But today, what we're going to be talking about is how these different colonizing species inter, influence the response to infection, and specifically try and draw parallels between what I'm going to be talking about and potential impacts it might have for HIV. And again, you all know this better than I do, the gut is a major site of early viral replication, as well as acting as a long-term reservoir for viral infection. But the microbiome is a whole lot more than just the bacteria that a lot of people think about. So, more and more, we're thinking about the fact that viruses and fungi are also part of the microbiome, and in parts of the world, we still have regular interactions with things that are not microbes, parasites. And when I started working on parasite infections, and I was talking to parasitologists, they got very upset when I tried to say that this was part of the microbiome. They are not microbes, they are way too big. And so, the word that I ended up using to try and deal with that was the multi-biom. So, the way that that, what that works for is it indicates that we're talking about more than just bacteria, as well as taking into account the size of these pathogens. And so, the other sort of interesting thing about HIV and parasites is this global distribution of it. So, you all again know that HIV, the prevalence of it is very high in sub-Saharan Africa, as well as equatorial regions, basically places where access to healthcare is less, less readily available than it is in European and North America. At the same time, Helminth infection is endemic in these same areas. And so, the question is, does Helminth infection impact HIV pathogenesis or progression? And this idea has been addressed by a number of people running randomized clinical trials, basically trying to deworm, so giving treatment to people who either are confirmed Helminth positive, or who just live in these areas because the prevalence of Helminth infection is so high, trying to give anti-Helminthics and see whether or not that delays progression of HIV. And this meta-analysis came out in 2016, and the basic point of it is, in people who are confirmed Helminth positive, there are small but significant effects on both CD4 T cell count, as well as viral loads. Again, these are very small effects, but each of these individual trials were done in small numbers of people. So, HIV, as you know, it's hard to study in animal models. Recently, the humanized mouse model has become available, but even that has its own problems. There's a lot of noise in the data, from what I understand. So, what we're going to do today is talk about a regular, a normal mouse pathogen that infects the gut, so, and we can use this as a model for looking at Helminth virus co-infection, to see whether or not we can learn anything about the immune response in the context of parasite infection, and how that influences antiviral immunity. So, the virus we're going to be using is Myrian norovirus. And the nice thing about this is, we have two different strains, they're very related. One of them causes a chronic infection, one of them causes an acute infection. And so, yeah, this is the question that we're going to try and address. And, oh, sorry. What I'm going to do is give you just a basic outline of what we know about norovirus immunity. So, this, I have no idea what I'm supposed to be pointing at over here. Norovirus is going to come into the gut, it's going to get across into the underlying tissues, and infect antigen presenting cells, so either dendritic cells or macrophages. It's going to replicate in those cells. These are also the same cells that are important for turning on T cell responses. So, once you, if in a normal, healthy mouse, you get a nice response of both CD4 and CD8 T cells. These help control viral replication, and virus gets cleared in the context of the CW3 strain that causes an acute infection. So, to ask the question of whether or not Helminth infection affects antiviral immunity, the worm that we're going to be using is called Trichinella. So, we infect, we wait for a TH2 immune response to develop, and then come in with viral infection. And what's shown over here, on the right-hand side of the screen, is viral loads in the small intestine. And in the column, it's just CW3 alone, it looks like there's no virus there, it's below the limit of detection. It's because the virus is cleared so rapidly in normal, healthy mice. But as you can see in the TS column, on the farthest, on the right, there's still a significant viral burden. So, Helminth infection is definitely impairing antiviral immunity. We're not getting clearance at the same rate that we do in normal mono-infected mice. If we look at the immune response to this, so basically what we're doing here is using a reagent, a touchmire reagent, to look for norovirus-specific CD8 T cells. So, we've already gated on CD8 T cells. On the top, we're looking at intraepithelial lymphocytes. On the bottom, we're looking at T cells in the spleen. And in the far left-hand columns, that's no virus. So, you can see even with Trichinella infection, our touchmire reagent is specific, it's not picking up any norovirus-specific cells. That's a great thing to know. And then with the virus, CW3, you get a nice, like 15% of the CD8 T cells are responding to the virus in the gut. And with co-infection, far less of them, and that's quantified over on the right-hand For HIV, obviously, CD4 T cells are going to be important. The co-infection is also affecting the antiviral CD4 T cell response, and we also have data showing that the cytokine profile of these cells diminished with co-infection, so there are less cells for both the CD4s and the CD8s, and they're less good at doing their job. So, if we redraw this model in the context of the co-infection, norovirus gets in, and it infects the macrophages and DCs, and those do a poor job of turning on both CD4 and CD8 T cells, resulting in impaired viral clearance. So, the question is, how does this happen? And what I will tell you is that, in the context of Helminth infection, this is long-lasting and far-reaching, as well as conserved across other worms. I'm not going to show you the data, but instead of waiting for, I think it was two weeks after Helminth infection, we waited out to 45 days after Helminth infection to allow that early worm-specific response to die down, and we still saw impaired antiviral immunity. It's far-reaching, so we did Helminth infection in the gut, and then followed up with influenza infection in the lung, still saw impaired antiviral immunity. And we tried this with a number of different worms, and saw similar effects. So, it looks like it's something that's operational across a number of systems, so the question is, how is this actually happening? And the first thing that we did was actually turn to the microbiome, to see whether or not the Helminth was working through bacteria to sort of change the inflammatory properties of the gut, to impair antiviral immunity that way. And the rationale that we had for this is that other worms have been shown to change the microbiome, and antiviral immunity in the context of germ-free mice is completely impaired in some other viral infections. So, the first thing we did was check whether or not our worm, that hadn't been published yet, actually changed the microbiota, and it does. So, you can see on the PCA plots, we looked in both the small intestine and the large intestine. The naive mice, shown in red, compared to the Trichinella-infected mice, they completely shake out differently. Phylum-level analysis, you can see in red, on the right-hand side, some of the bacterial species that were shown to be significantly different between the two groups. So, does it matter? So, we definitely see these shifts in the microbiota, but does that mean anything? So, to test this, we use germ-free mice. So, basically, same kind of infection, Helminth plus virus, but with nothing else present in the small intestine, or the large intestine either. So, we can do this with germ-free mice. We decided to use germ-free mice that are born and raised in the complete absence of any live microbial stimuli, rather than antibiotics, just because antibiotics will kill the bacteria, but they won't necessarily affect other viruses or fungi. So, we have our germ-free mice, compare them to conventional black six mice, and there are a couple of outcomes that we were worried about here. One, germ-free mice with other viruses have completely impaired antiviral immunity. And two, other viruses that infect the intestinal tract have been shown to interact with the microbiota in order to actually cause infection. So, we didn't know if the virus was going to cause an infection, we didn't know if the germ-free mice were going to have their own impaired antiviral immunity. Luckily, we did see infection in the germ-free mice. So, you can't see very much here, because it looks like they've already cleared it. So, this is the germ-free mono-infected mice, but the co-infected mice, germ-free and conventional, they're both infected at very high levels. Again, we wanted to check whether or not the germ-free mono-infected mice had even been infected, or if we were just below the level of detection. And for the conventional mono-infected mice, good T cell response. For the germ-free mono-infected mice, almost the exact same T cell response. So, they got infected, they mounted a response, and that gave us the confidence that we could then look at the co-infected mice to see whether or not there was a difference. And you can see in the conventional mice, again, there's a lower T cell response, that's expected, and you see the exact same lower T cell response in the germ-free co-infected mice. So, what that tells us is that the worms are acting directly on the host, not in this sort of roundabout fashion through the microbiota to affect antiviral immunity. And so, how does that happen? What are the cellular and molecular mechanisms allowing this? And because in data, again, that I'm not going to show you, we saw these early viral loads coming up very, very, or we saw viral loads increasing very early in the response, before this defect in T cell activation would be important, we started looking at the innate immune system. And particularly, we focused on the antigen-presenting cells, because those are the cells that the virus infects, and those are the cells that are going to turn on the T cell response. And as you can see, the M1 macrophages, the classically activated ones, these are supposed to be important for TH1 immunity, but with infection with worms, you get IL4 and IL13, there's TH2 response, you get alternative activation of macrophages. And the signature of these alternatively activated macrophages is expression of Arginine's alpha, realm alpha, Arginine's 1, sorry, realm alpha and YM1. So, we looked to see whether or not this was happening in our co-infected mice. So, first, we just looked, took a broad screen, looking at the kinds of antigen-presenting cells that were there, looking in the mesenteric lymph node. The takeaway from this is in that black bar that's very, very high, we've got way more CD11b-positive cells that look like they're macrophages. And if you do gene signatures, in the mesenteric lymph node and the ileum, you've got high expression of all of these signature genes, the realm alpha, the YM1, and the Arginine's. So, the question that we had for this was, these macrophages, we've, we're seeing increased viral loads at these early time points, and these macrophages are supposed to be turning on a T cell response, as well as harboring virus. So, we took these wild-type mice, or stat6 knockout mice, that impair generation of this TH2 response, you don't get alternative activation of macrophages, and that's shown here, this S6, you don't see Arg, Realm, or YM1 coming up. We took IL4-treated bone marrow-derived macrophages from wild-type mice, or stat6 knockout mice, that don't generate alternative activation, and infected with virus in vitro. And so, on this side, what you see is CW3 infection of just normal bone marrow macrophages, and when you do the virus infection, you get some virus being produced. If you take wild-type mice and give them IL4 first to alternatively activate them, you get way more virus coming out. So, these cells are allowing the virus to replicate really quickly, and we also thought we're doing a poor job of turning on T cell responses. And I'm not going to show you the data for that early T cell activation, but they do a bad job of activating T cells, both in vitro and in vivo. So, why is that? What's happening? So, again, I'm not going to show you the data for this, but we inhibited Arginine's 1, and that had no effect. We used realm alpha knockout mice, and that had no effect. So, that left us with YM1 to try and figure out if these macrophages were doing anything. And luckily, Judy Allen, her postdoc, was actively working on YM1 and kinase-like protein biology in a completely different context, and it generated an antibody that neutralized YM1 function, and they were generous enough to share it with us. So, what we did was, we took that YM1 monoclonal neutralizing antibody and treated mice just before viral infection. So, Helminth is there, without any effect of the YM1 neutralizing antibodies, everything sets up normally. And then, just before we do the virus infection, we treated with YM1 and a couple of times throughout the infection, and looked to see whether or not that affected T cell activation and viral loads. So, these plots here, this is looking at CD8 T cell function. So, in the mono-infected mice that were treated with isotope, we've got this pie chart and a bunch of different colors. What those colors indicate is how many effector molecules are being produced. So, the effector molecules that we looked at are TNF-alpha, interferon gamma, MIP1-alpha, CD107a, and granzyme B. So, the cytokines, as well as the molecules that are involved in actual cytotoxic T cell function. And basically, in red, these are the cells that can produce all five of them at the same time, and in blue is the cells that only produce one of those molecules at any given time. And the cells that produce more than one molecule at a time are just thought to be better at doing their job. So, mono-infected, isotope-treated, you've got about half of the cells that are producing either four or five of the effector molecules. With the co-infection, almost half the cells are producing only one of them, so they're not doing a very good job. And with the YM1 blockade, we've really restored the function of these cells. The numbers are partially restored, so we're not completely fixing the problem, but of the cells that are there, they're doing a much better job. Same kind of thing for the CD4 T cells. So, mono-infected mice, we've got a good number of cytokine-producing CD4s, definitely decreased with the co-infection, and a partial restoration with YM1. And ultimately, what matters is viral loads, and we see, again, a partial clearance of virus at this timeframe. So, we weren't able to completely fix the problem, but it's definitely looking a lot better in the absence of YM1. Oh, and this is not the words that are supposed to be on this slide, but basically, the model that we have is Helminth infection plus virus. What happens is, you've got increased viral loads very, very early on in these macrophages. Macrophages and DCs that are supposed to turn on a T cell response, they're producing YM1, is supposed to be here, instead of 56.7. And that YM1 does something to inhibit the function of CD8 T cells. And this, we believe, happens directly, and there is a partial effect on CD4s that looks like it's an indirect effect. But ultimately, because you've got this, these things going on, what you end up with is diminished control of virus and Helminth-infected hosts. And so, this is all well and good. This paper came out back-to-back with this other paper here, by Tiffany Reese and Skip Virgin's group, where they basically did the infection the completely opposite direction. So, they took gamma herpes virus, which develops a latent infection in black six mice, and they used a recombinant virus that allows them to monitor viral activation, or viral replication, sorry, by luminescence. So, virus goes in first, and then, six weeks later, the virus should be latent, not, not very active, and that's shown here, so very little, a little bit of blue, but nothing in this bright range of a lot of viral replication. And then they gave a Helminth afterwards, and you can see, just a week after Helminth infection, you've got this bright spot of viral replication. And this was also shown to be stat6-dependent, also involving macrophages. So, this pathway, whether or not you're infecting with Helminth first or afterwards, is impairing antiviral immunity in a way that seems to be dependent on stat6 and innate immune responses. So, if we try and bring this back to what you guys all care about, to HIV, what are some of the potential effects of this work, and how does it potentially influence HIV infections? So, the myeloid cells and CD4 T cells, those are really the target cells for HIV, right? So, these alternatively activated macrophages that are going to be present in the intestine of Helminth-infected hosts, they're going to be potentially, there's going to be more of them there, and they're going to be doing a poor job of controlling viral replication. There's going to be more CD4 T cells probably in the gut, because they're actively responding to a Helminth infection, you've got more target cells. So, this could lead to a potential increase in early viral load, which could have effects on viral transmission later on, so you're going to have a higher circulating viral load as well. And really, the other important thing that I think comes out of this is, if we do get to a point where we've got an effective HIV vaccine, these worms are showing, have, are in areas of where Helminths are endemic, vaccination against rotavirus is way less efficacious than it is in North America and Europe. So, if we have the opportunity to think about designing an HIV vaccine now, trying to think about how we can do it in a way that overcomes these Helminth-induced immunomodulatory effects, I think would be very useful. And these are just some of the citations that I drew from. So, with that, I'd like to thank the people that are in my lab now at UBC, as well as David Artis, who is my postdoc supervisor, where I did most of this work. We have some continuing ideas based off of this and around that now. So, if there are any questions, I'll take a few of them now. Otherwise, I'll talk to you afterwards. Oh, yeah? And I mean, I'll just repeat the question, whether or not there's anything known about Helminths and CMV infection? And I don't believe, not that I know of. So, CMV, most of the studies that I can think of are related to aging, and I don't think that I've seen anything, yeah, nothing that I know of. That doesn't mean it's not out there. It's a good question.
Now, it just, in terms of all the Helminth story about in Africa, because more or less it's more Montsoni on, that are associated with the pathogenesis in Africa, in Montsoni, Shistoza Montsoni.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, in that case, in the context of Shistoza Montsoni, we have a switch from TH1 to TH2. What is occurring with Trichinella? We have something like that, or there is no switch commutation between TH1 versus TH2?
Sorry, I think I missed something. So, Shisto induces a TH2 response?
Yeah, exactly. But explain maybe a difference between what you found, or if you correct, between what is occurring with treatment with anti-Helminth, in which we have a partial restoration, as compared to what you have found here in your mouse model, in which you have a drastic effect on innate immunity on CD8 cell response.
Right. So, if I understood your question correctly, you're asking whether or not the TH2 cells are directly involved in the impairment of antiviral immunity?
Yeah.
So, we tried to address that using rag knockout mice, doing the Helminth infection, and seeing whether or not we had a continued impairment of antiviral immunity. Turns out, we don't get the same alternative activation of macrophages without the TH2 cells. So, the TH2 cells are continually producing IL4 and 13, that then drive the alternative activation of macrophages. So, I do believe the TH2 cells are involved in this process, but almost through an indirect route.
Sure.
Yeah. There was a question over there, or no? Okay. All right. Thank you.
So, thank you very much, Lisa. Next speaker is going to be Sharu Kaushik. She's a professor of pathology and molecular medicine at McMaster University.
Wait. So, I'd like to start by thanking the car organizers, especially Jimmy and Ralph, for organizing this session, and for giving me a chance to talk about our recent work. And thank you all for taking the time, from rushing off for the cruise, to be here. So, okay, trying to see. So, I will be talking about some of the new work that we've done in the last two or three years, where we've started to look at the effect of vaginal microbiota on HIV infection in women. So, I have no conflicts to declare. A little vaginal microbiome 101. So, the vaginal microbiome, and I was hoping Adam was going to go before me, so I wouldn't have to show his slide, but he's going after me. So, we love his slide, we all start with Adam's slide, so, there you go, Adam. So, what this slide is actually showing is that the vaginal epithelium is lined with bacteria, millions and billions of them. The vaginal microbiome is dominated by lactobacillus species normally. And when the vaginal microbiome is dominated by lactobacillus species, it has a low vaginal pH of under four, and this is correlated with less STI risk, and a normal pregnancy, and better health outcomes. Vaginal microbiome that differs from this lactobacillus dominant, which is frequently called dysbiotic, this is related with, correlated with increased STIs, poor outcomes of pregnancy, and other issues. The dysbiosis, or changing from lactobacillus dominant to polymicrobial, is frequently associated with the only clinical disease that is known for, which is a dysbiotic microbiota, and that's called bacterial vaginosis. And this is a well-known disorder, which increases HIV risk by two to five-fold, and there are many, many studies that have shown that. So, among the things that we know regulate vaginal microbiota, one of the interesting factors is the ethnicity. So, these studies came out very early on, when Jaqureville and his group were looking at the changes in microbiota through the cycle in women, you know, among many different women. And this was an early discovery that they made, that depending on the ethnicity of the women, there was a change in the microbiota. So, what this slide is showing is that, in red, so all colors, except the blue, are CST, or community-state types, that are dominated by some species of lactobacillus. And blue is the polymicrobial microbiota. And blue is the polymicrobial microbiota. So if you notice in Asian and white women, the blue, I don't know if you can see in the back, is between 10 and 20%. So 10 and 20% of women have this polymicrobial microbiota that's associated with poor outcomes, whereas majority of the, or a big portion of the black and Hispanic women, about 40% actually have this polymicrobial microbiota. What does this mean? We don't actually know exactly. Does this correlate with increased STIs? We do know that this polymicrobial microbiota and the presence of bacterial vaginosis, the clinical condition associated with this, is related to poor outcomes of health. So this slide is taken from a review, and basically on the X-axis, which you see, seeing is the diversity of microbiota. So these, the R3 to R4 and R6, so every group has their own way of defining polymicrobial. This is the polymicrobial group that's shown here. And you can see that the risk of, or the percent of women in this cluster who have all the different kinds of bacterial STIs is very high. And as the polymicrobial nature goes down, and you have more single lactobacillus dominance, the risk or the occurrence of these STIs goes down. So what does this mean in terms of women who are at high risk? So here's a slide which actually shows what we know for, we've known for a while, that especially young women, between the ages of 15 and 24, in Sub-Saharan Africa are at very high risk for HIV. This is the number of HIV infections in young women. And if you notice, there's a big jump in the 15 to 24-year-old. So does this correlate with, how does this correlate with microbiota? So this paper that came out a couple of years ago from Doug Kwan's group actually answered that question, that, in which they showed that lactobacillus deficiency in the cervical vaginal bacteria is associated with increased acquisition in this exact group of 15 to 24-year-old. So clearly, what this slide, the summary slide from them shows is that if you have lots of lactobacillus, there's less inflammatory T-cells inside, and there's less viral infection. If there's polymicrobial microbiota that correlates with a lot of infection, lots of activated T-cells, and increased HIV infection. And they showed in this paper that this is exactly how the increased infection actually occurs, through inflammation. What about other groups that are at higher risk? So we did a study, which I'm going to talk about now. So here's another group that has very high risk of HIV infection, sex workers. So the pooled odds ratio for HIV infection among female sex workers is about 14 times higher than women who are not involved in sex work. So a few years ago, we started this work where we collaborated with Keith Fokes' group in Manitoba and their clinics, the swap clinics that they run in Nairobi. And we asked the question, because this was not clear in literature, there's a few papers that talk about sex work and microbiota, but there was no clear consensus whether that is actually affected. So we asked the question, does sex work alter the vaginal microbiome? And this study was spearheaded by a very talented postdoc in my lab, Jocelyn Wessels, who's sitting right here. And what we wanted to do was to profile the vaginal microbiome of sex workers and non-sex workers from the same community in Nairobi. And the hypothesis was that we will see greater diversity in the vaginal microbiomes compared to the non-sex workers. And Julie Lejua in Keith's lab was the research coordinator on this, and fantastic. Before we could ask for things, she was already doing all those things in Nairobi. So great coordinator of the study. So the study, this was a retrospective clinical study. We wanted to do other studies in this, and we didn't know what to expect from the vaginal microbiota here. So it was a retrospective study, which was from the studies that the Fokes' lab had already done. And we got about 48 samples from them, from new sex workers, women who had been doing sex work for less than five years, and compared that to 19 non-sex workers from the same community. And this paper was published last year, so I won't show you too many data details. The main finding from this was that sex work does lead to greater diversity in vaginal microbiome compared to non-sex workers. And Jocelyn looked at many different ways in terms of the number of observed species, KO richness, as well as the alpha diversity. And in all of these parameters, you could see that the sex workers have much more diversity and number of different species than the non-sex workers. This is also shown in the taxabar charts, and you can see where each one of these columns is a single woman. And on the left are the non-sex workers, and on the right are the sex workers. And you can see the gray bars of the gray areas and the yellow striped ones. These are the lactobacillus dominant. And you can see that in the non-sex workers, about 58%, I think, if I read it correctly, women were lactobacillus dominant, whereas in the sex workers, just 17% were lactobacillus dominant. Majority of the women, 83%, were actually polymicrobial in this group. And one of the interesting, so there's a lot more data in the paper that I'm not going to get into, because I wanted to show you some unpublished work. But one of the things that came out from this study, which, when we started looking at it and answering some of the reviewers' questions, is that the clinical way of diagnosing polymicrobial flora, the only way to do that is to do Nugent scoring. Nugent scoring is a very old microscopy technique, and there are more and more papers that are coming out that show that Nugent scoring doesn't always match with the 16S sequencing data. So this was seen very, by us also, in this very clearly. And the reason this is important is that clinician, for most part, either look at polymicrobial flora only in the context of bacterial vaginosis. So here's the non-sex workers, which are divided by BV negative clinically diagnosed, or Nugent scores of 0 to 3, intermediates that are in between having clear clinical BV and not. And the BV positive that were clinically diagnosed with BV, and they have Nugent scores of 7 to 10. And this is what you would expect, that between the BV negative, intermediate, and BV positive, the alpha diversity is significantly increased. But that didn't turn out to be the case for sex workers. In the sex workers, you pretty much found no difference in the diversity, regardless of whether they were BV positive, Nugent scoring. And if you look at these, when we, when Jocelyn actually divided this into low Nugent scoring, 0 to 3 Nugent scores, and looked at the type of microbiota, the microbi, microflora there was, you could see that despite the low 0 to 3 Nugent scores, there were very high alpha diversity in some of these sex workers. So clearly, there's a disparity between clinical diagnosis and what the high throughput sequencing can actually show. So the second study that we conducted over there, which is currently in communication, had to do with looking at the effect of hormonal contraceptives. So the seven, the, one of the big correlates of HIV, increased HIV infection is the use of DMPA in Sub-Saharan Africa, which is an extremely popular contraceptive. And it has been shown for more than 15 years, people working in this area have seen it as a correlate of increased HIV susceptibility. In the last few years, this has been shown over and over now with a number of different meta-analysis. I'm just giving an example of one of these by Charlie Morrison, where a number of studies that were, that Charlie looked at, you can see that there's an increased risk of HIV susceptibility if the women are using DMPA. The overall hazard ratio is about 1.4, so about 40% increased risk, which, when you look at, in the context of South Africa, translates into millions more infection. So it's not clear why there is this increased risk. And the study that we did want, was basically to try to correlate this in the context of microbiota. So here's what we hypothesized, that the hormones, we know, regulate immune system in the reproductive tract, in the vaginal tract. And the hormones also regulate microbiome, and I'll tell you about that in a second. And we know that the microbiome and immune system cross-talk with each other. So the idea was, can we look at factors that increase or decrease this axis, which is the trifecta of these hormones, microbiome, and immune system? And how does that affect tissue inflammation? And obviously, increased tissue inflammation correlates with increased HIV susceptibility. So that's what we were testing, and we know that we had already seen, and others have shown, that bacterial vaginosis has a positive effect on this axis. And the question we asked was, what effect does DMPA or progestin-based contraceptive have on this axis? So here was a very simple hypothesis that we started with. We expected that women who were on MPA would have decreased lactobacillus. They would have increased innate inflammation, and therefore increased activated T-cells, and that would translate into increased HIV susceptibility. So that was the research question, that can we correlate DMPA with greater diversity of bacterial species? And the aim was to basically try to compare women who were on DMPA with women who were not using hormonal contraceptives or using oral contraceptives, which contain estrogen, which has been shown in many studies to be protective. And this is, this was our hypothesis, that we would find more diversity in the DMPA-treated women. And again, the study was carried out in the Pumwani clinics in collaboration with University of Manitoba and Nairobi. Our goal was to recruit about 30 women, sex workers in DMPA, 30 workers in oral contraceptive, and 30 workers on no hormonal contraceptive. And the numbers shown in parentheses is the numbers that we actually reached till about the end of last year. So extremely difficult to get women who are on oral contraceptive, just because it's just not a popular contraceptive in the context of Nairobi and this population of women. Just to, because of our first study, where we knew that bacterial vaginosis was a confounding factor for finding polymicrobial flora, we actually eliminated any BV positive women from our study group. So that was one of the reasons why we had very difficult time in recruiting enough numbers. So I know you can probably see this at the back of the room, but I put this in here just to basically show you that we actually started, or the clinic actually screened 350 women to really go through a very strict stringent criteria with no STIs, no BV, no yeast, HIV negative, STI negative, no sex, and these are sex workers. So we had asked them to, you know, not have sex for about 24 hours before, and we were screening them with PSA. So very stringent criteria, and that's why we could enroll about 55 women in this group. But the data made up for, the data made up for how clean the results were. So this is just a quick look at the participant characteristics, and I basically wanted to show you that in any of the three groups, there were no big differences, that we could allude any of the differences to. The women who were not on hormonal contraceptive were basically, the samples were taken at exactly the same time, between five and 10 days after their last menstrual cycle. So this is the proliferative phase of the cycle, which is estrogen high. However, previous studies have shown that there's really no big changes in microbiota through the menstrual cycle. So that's not a confounding factor, as far as we know. So what did we find? Basically, we found that if you look at the no hormone group, oral contraceptive group, and DMPA group, there was really no difference in the number of, percent of women who were lactobacillus dominant. So this matches well with previous studies that have shown that hormonal contraceptives don't really change the number of women who have lactobacillus dominant. However, make a note of this tail, which basically shows increased number of bacterial species in DMPA, because this is going to come back in the next slide. Because when Jocelyn looked at the alpha diversity, that's where the differences started to come out. So she didn't see in, any difference in the overall OTUs or the richness of the species, but the alpha diversity was clearly different in the DMPA-treated group compared to the other groups. And this cleaned up even better when we took out the oral contraceptive group because of the low number of samples that we had. So clearly, there is, in this particular group, there is increased diversity in DMPA-treated women. And we did a number of different things to try to see why this diversity was there. It's known in literature that DMPA has an anti-estrogenic effect, or hypo-estrogenic effect, which basically means it lowers estrogen levels in the serum. And estrogen is the main hormone that establishes lactobacillus dominance in the vaginal tract. So what does estrogen do? It actually establishes glycogen as a substrate in the vaginal cells that provide it as a substrate for bacteria lactobacillus to grow. So we tried to correlate this with the glycogen and the enzyme that digests the glycogen into smaller units of sugar, glucose, and maltose that the bacteria can actually use. And bacterial diversity did indeed correlate inversely with the glycogen. So the more glycogen there was, the less diversity there was. And there was also a trend towards the alpha amylase, which is the main enzyme that digests Interestingly, when we divided the groups by DMPA versus no hormones, because of the low numbers, we had to pool the DMPA, or the no hormone group with the oral contraceptive group. And when we did that, there was enough statistical power to actually show that the DMPA group actually had both low amylase and a trend towards low glycogen. So it does look like there's lower amounts of glycogen and amylase in these groups, in the DMPA-treated women. Keith's lab actually did a lot of analysis of many different inflammatory factors in the cervical vaginal lavages. And we didn't come up with a whole lot, but we did come up with a clear correlation between the IL1 alpha and IL1 beta, and that correlates with the diversity, bacterial diversity as well. And interestingly, the CD4 positive, CD38 positive, which is the activated CD4 T-cells in the cervical, in the cervical cyto brush, also correlated with the diversity. So it's interesting to note that at least some of the ones, especially IL1 alpha, which has been shown in many other studies to correlate with bacterial diversity, did pop up in these studies. So what I've shown you basically is that from these studies, we could see that MPA did increase, decrease the number of women who were lactobacillus dominant, or at least we saw increase in the diversity. We saw some signs of innate inflammation and activated T-cells. Whether or not this translates into HIV susceptibility, we were actually able to translate these studies in humanized mice, where we actually saw increase in HIV susceptibility. But I'm not going to show you those studies, because this is a talk on microbiota. So the other part of this equation is that can we do the opposite? Can we give, or can estrogen actually decrease susceptibility? Can, so this is the simple hypothesis again, that we think that if we give estrogen, we should be able to increase lactobacillus dominance, decrease innate inflammation, and therefore HIV susceptibility. Is this possible? And I'm going to show you a trial that we are running right now, but this is basically sort of the hypothesis that we have, that in the presence of estrogen, we think that there's a lactobacillus dominant environment, which confers a healthy phenotype, if you may, with lots of good innate protection, less target cells, less inflammation. And in the case of midroxiprogesterone acetate, or DMPA, which is hypo-estrogenic, there's a lot more polymicrobial flora, lot more, less innate protection, and lot more target cells. So what we're doing to prove this is a clinical intervention trial that is going to start in the second half of this year. This is being done at Women's Health and Women's Hand Clinic in Toronto, which is a clinic which basically provides health care for mainly African Caribbean black women, many of whom, majority of whom are immigrants to Canada. And the idea is to see if we can improve vaginal health, which is basically increase lactobacillus dominance, to decrease the biological risk of HIV-1. lactobacillus dominance to decrease the biological risk of HIV-1. And this study is being done in collaboration with CTA and support. And what we're proposing to do is very simple, although it's turning out not to be so simple, because it's turning out to be a Health Canada trial, so we're in the middle of preparing the CTA for this. And what we're going to do is, we are proposing to take 80 African Caribbean women, some of whom are going to be only on estrogen ring, a vaginal ring that contains low-dose estrogen, or a combination of estrogen with oral probiotic, just to see feasibility of whether women are able to use this, you know, on a regular basis, or estrogen with vaginal probiotic, which we think might have higher efficacy because it's a local effect, or just vaginal probiotic as a control group. And we're going to try to see if we can analyze microbiota to see whether we've been able to shift this microbiota over the 30-day this trial is going to run. We will look at the inflammatory factors and try to analyze the HIV target cells to see whether this is actually possible or not. So, and then perhaps in a couple of years, I can update you on how this trial actually worked out. And I'd like to finish by acknowledging the people who were involved in this work. Jocelyn Wessels, right here, she presented a poster on this earlier today, or earlier yesterday. The lab, the McMaster Genomics Facility, and Mike Sorette, he's our guru of microbiome, microbiota and bioinformatics. And of course, the University of Manitoba people without whom this work would not be possible. And that's just my group, and that's us having a consultation meeting with the swap clinic workers in Nairobi, and of course, the funding agencies. And I'll take any questions. Thank you.
I'll repeat your question.
So is it the same that you saw with DMPA use increased diversity in vaginal microbiome? And there are studies that show the opposite, which hormonal contraceptives decrease. And even us, we did a study looking at handy women who were, sorry, who were in stable relationships, and DMPA users versus non-hormonal contraceptive users, about 90 women. And we saw that there was a trend towards more lactobacillus with DMPA use. And so it raises an interesting question, whether it's sexual practice dependent? Is it that, you know, could it be that these differences we're seeing in studies could be related to sexual behaviors? Or being in a stable relationship, maybe more exposure, or more partners in the context of DMPA is bad? Or what are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, no, that's a good point. I will point out, though, because we've spent a lot of time reviewing studies, obviously, because, you know, other studies, actually, there is a paper that just came out that did see similar diversity as us in DMPA, following DMPA treatment. Most of the studies have not excluded bacterial vaginosis in women. And we think that that might be one of the reasons, because that we know is a confounding factor. So if women have bacterial vaginosis already, then they already have polymicrobial. And then you really, on top of that, if you superimpose the hormonal effects, you don't really see much. So if we, because we tried to do that with the previous study, to see if we, because we knew which women were, and we couldn't see any effect. So that's why the stringency of the study about excluding the bacterial vaginosis, so that's one thing. The second thing is that we didn't actually, just like the other studies reported, we did not see overall changes in the number of women who had lactobacillus dominant. What we could do, because of the type of sample and the stringency of the sampling that we did, was that we could see that tail, where in DMPA-treated women, we could see there were more bacterial species that were starting to pop up. And the final analysis that Jocelyn did was actually, we excluded even any of the women, even within that group, that were showing Nugent scores of higher than three. So it was a very, very tight group of, and in that, we could still see increased diversity. So, but I agree with you that I think we are actually now running a low-risk group in the same setting, because I think it's really important to see whether this is a sex women, or women who are sex workers alone phenomena, or does this extrapolate to the general population? So that's a very good point. Yes?
Yes. Hello. As you know, there are also associations between gut microbiome and pregnancy outcomes. So I mean, I'd like to hear you on, are there any relationships between gut microbiome and vaginal microbiome and susceptibility, and should that be taken into account?
Yeah, so I didn't realize, I should have given a little bit more broader overview, but I thought Lisa was going to do a little bit more gut microbiome overall, so I didn't include that. So it's interesting, because we constantly comment on the fact that gut microbiome is actually the exact opposite of vaginal microbiome. So as many people who are familiar with the microbiota area would know, that in gut microbiota, the more bacteria you have, the better it is, and the more healthier outcomes there are, and the healthier the people are. So in gut, the goal is to increase the number of species. So why is it that gut microbiota has polymicrobial and vaginal microbiota, the better it is if it's just single lactobacillus dominant? Most people believe that the origin of the lactobacillus is actually from the gut, because it is found in the gut. But because of the presence of estrogen and the presence of glycogen, there's a specific enrichment of the lactobacillus species. So what was your question again? Is that the crosstalk that you were asking about, or?
Was there a relationship between microbiota?
Yeah, so what we're trying to do right now is to basically see, why is there bacterial vaginosis? Because it looks like polymicrobial microbiota in some ethnicities is not a phenotype that is conferred because of other issues. It seems to be genetically linked. So could there be a link between the gut microbiota being different, and whether that confers a different kind of vaginal microbiota? So the short answer is, we don't know. But it's definitely something to understand what host factors determine what kind of microbiota that you have. Yes, okay. I don't want to steal Adam's thunder.
Very beautiful work. I have two questions to ask you. So in your DMPA-treated, the commercial sex workers, when you, in your polymicrobiome group, biota group, is there any special species that kind of stand out in there?
Yeah, so that has been shown, I didn't have a chance to show that. So in, many other studies have shown that the bacterial vaginosis is conferred, or the bacteria that are associated with bacterial vaginosis are typically Gardnerella, Prevotella, Etobium, and BVAB, which is a collection of bacteria which are associated with bacterial vaginosis, that we don't exactly know exactly what they are. So there's four or five different types of bacteria, and we did see those. So a number of these women are fairly high in Gardnerella and Prevotella, and some of these typical bacterial vaginosis-associated species.
Thank you. And the second question is, when you say there's no differences in the lactobacilli dominance between DMPA-taking group or not DMPA group, so is any special species changes within the lactobacilli group? It's the same question you asked me.
Sorry, so you're saying, what is the species that's enriched?
So is there any differences in?
The type of lactobacillus?
Yes.
In the different, the different kinds of lactobacillus, you mean?
That's right.
So in the African women, most of the times, the lactobacillus species that you find is iners, which is typically what we find in this group too, the Crispatus, Gensinii, and the Gasserai, which are found in Caucasian women, is not very enriched in the, in this particular group. It's mostly iners-dominated, and I don't think that changes with DMPA. All right, I'm happy to talk otherwise, but I know that Adam wants to give his talk, and I know people are anxious to get to the cruise.
Yes, if we have a little bit of time after Adam's talk, we can have some more questions, if you have any. So it's my pleasure to introduce the last speaker, Adam Burgenner. He is Associate Professor at the University of Manitoba and Head of the Proteomics Group for the, at P-HAC, that's also at Manitoba.
All yours. Is that the laser pointer? Awesome. Thank you. So I'll speak quite loudly, so I can get everyone in the overflow room. All right, thank you, Charu. I can skip some slides at the beginning. Vaginal microbiome, that's great, so this should be less than 20 minutes, and everyone should be on time. So thank you to the organizers for inviting me to give a talk. I'll be talking about the vaginal microbiome in a little different context than Charu, so hopefully some diversity. And I'll be talking about how it relates to HIV transmission, as well as how it interacts with antiretroviral drugs. So new infections globally are still a huge problem. There's, in 2016, there were upwards of 2 million new infections every year. And the majority of new infections occur in sub-Saharan Africa, about 800,000 of them occur there. And greater than half of those are in young women. And if you do the math, this equates to about one young woman being infected by HIV every minute. So developing HIV prevention strategies for this group is really an important priority, and something that is a priority with our group. So we're really interested in trying to understand, what are the biological reasons that might contribute to increased acquisition risk in young women? So we're interested in the vaginal microbiome. I won't go and labor this in too much detail, but the vaginal microbiome is the first sight of contact for HIV. And women can have, the lactobacillus is commonly present in the vagina, and this helps to promote a low vaginal pH, and it secretes antimicrobial factors, it's associated with a healthy mucosal barrier, and healthy and positive reproductive health outcomes. Whereas, many women don't have lactobacillus, instead of have anaerobic bacteria and facultative anaerobes, such as Gardnerella, Etobium, Prevotella. And this is often asymptomatic and subclinical. But it is associated with increased STI risk, preterm birth, and other negative reproductive health outcomes. So we've been asking the question, how does this relate to HIV acquisition risk in young women? And there have been many meta-analyses, which Charu presented this, looking at the relationship between bacterial vaginosis and HIV, depending on which meta-analysis you look at. This is one by Atashili, and A's published in 2018. There is a 60% increase risk of acquisition associated with bacterial vaginosis. So the methods to use to assess the vaginal microbiome, the classical clinical method is microscopy-based, as Charu was discussing, and this is Nugent score, and this is a paper by Sharon Hillier in the early 90s, in which they look at the proportion of gram-negative and gram-variable rods in a pap smear, and the more, the higher amounts of these bugs, the higher the Nugent score you have. But this is not, this is not always accurate, and I'll discuss some more of that later. With advent of new sequencing technologies, such as 16s ribosomal RNA sequencing, the diversity of the vaginal microbiome has been characterized in much more detail. And this is a paper by Jacques Rabel, showing that there is, that women can fall into different subgroups, including women who have lactobacillus as the dominant bacterium, either El Crispatus or lactobacillus iners, and then there are women that do not have lactobacillus at all, instead of these polymicrobial states. And so in our lab, we use mass spectrometry to characterize the microbiome. And mass spectrometry, rather than looking at gene or gene product, or genes, transcripts of the microbiome, we look at proteins. And by looking at proteins, we get functional information on the bacterium. So it gives us a lot of different layers of information. It allows us to look at the diversity of the microbiome, and these are proportion plots showing the relative abundance of different bacterial species. It also gives us absolute abundance of the bacterium. So we can look at the, since it's not an amplification-based method, it allows us to look at the absolute number of protein products from bacteria. It also allows us to probe the functional diversity of the microbiome, so we can look at functional pathways in vivo, look at metabolic pathways, those sorts of things, within a single sample. And it also allows us to look at species level and strain level specificity within the microbiome, which is not easily done with genomics techniques. So to answer the question about HIV risk, we partnered with Capriza, Lyle McKinnon, and Saleem Kareem, who's the Director of Capriza, and did a cohort analysis of women who participated in the Capriza 004 clinical trial. And this trial was conducted from 2007 to 2010, that tested the vaginal microbicide contained Tenofvir for protection against HIV. So we did a cohort analysis, and there were 100 infections, upwards of 100 infections in women who were enrolled in this trial over the three-year period. And after consent considerations and quality control considerations, we were left with about 700 women in our study, and we obtained cervical vaginal lavage samples of women in the study, including the last HIV-negative time point of women who became HIV-infected or HIV cases, as well as randomly selected sample of all HIV-negative women in the trial. And we had about 700 women in our study, which are evenly distributed between the two drug arms in the trial. And we analyzed the cervical vaginal lavage samples by mass spectrometry to look at the vaginal microbiome, as well as host inflammatory pathways. So this is a diversity map, looking at the microbiome of these 700 women. And what you could see is they fell into two broad groups. The one, the women on the far left in group one, these are broken down by the species level of lactobacillus. So women on the far left, group one, these are women who had lactobacillus Crispatus as the dominant bacterium. Group two is quite large, these are women who had lactobacillus iners as the dominant bacterium. Group three had Gardnerella vaginalis as the dominant bacterium. And group four was highly polymicrobial, and didn't have any dominant bacteria, instead had bacteria such as Mobuluncus, Prevotella, Gardnerella as co-dominant. And so this just is a PCA plot, showing the distribution of these different microbiome groups. You can see the group one, two, and three cluster quite nicely together, whereas group four is heterogeneous, and seems to be on a continuum between these different groups. And when we did Cox proportion hazard model, look at the incidence of HIV infection, women in group four were at a greater than sixfold increased risk of acquiring HIV than women who had type 1 microbiome profile, or women who had El Crispatus. Women in group two and three were also at increased risk of HIV infection, but this was not, this did not reach statistical significance. So this really suggested that women who had polymicrobial bacterial profiles are at high risk of HIV infection. And we didn't see any baseline clinical or behavioral characteristics that were different in women who were in group four compared to the other groups. The only notable observation was that women in group, in group one, had a later age of sexual debut, but other than that, there were no differences. And so to understand the mechanisms of how the microbiome is driving increased risk, we looked at host inflammatory pathways. So proteomics identifies many host proteins in mucosal fluid that we can map to inflammation pathways. And what we found is that there were many proteins to be associated with risk, and also many proteins to be associated with protection. So the proteins in red, this is a volcano plot, showing those in red associated with HIV cases or HIV susceptibility, and proteins in blue associated with HIV protection. These are just hazard plots, looking at the relative association of these individual proteins with HIV infection risk, and they're relatively evenly distributed. And when we compared this to the vaginal microbiome, we could see that women with type 4 microbiota had a significantly increased frequency in the amount of proteins associated, biomarkers associated with HIV susceptibility, and a significantly decreased frequency of those with the protective factors as shown in blue, suggesting there was a strong relationship between the microbiome and these inflammation biomarkers. So looking at proteins associated with HIV protection, these really, these strongly associated with the vaginal epithelium. So we looked at cervical biopsies of Kenyan women, and we used immunohistochemical staining to look at the expression of these proteins, and these were expressed in the upper layers of And these were expressed in the upper layers of the vaginal epithelium and squamous epithelial layer. And the biological functions associated with these proteins are included cell-cell adhesion and protease inhibition, as well as calcium ion binding, which suggested that they had an important role in epithelial barrier maintenance. And one of these proteins, spin K5, is a serine protease inhibitor. It's important for regulating desquamation of the epithelium and to promote barrier integrity. And a little plug-in for Alicia Barard, who's a postdoc in my lab and is developing, looking at cult culture models of bacteria with vaginal epithelium, epithelial cells, and she's presenting tomorrow, looking at the interaction between BV-associated bacteria and epithelium and how these cause disruption. So I encourage you to go see that tomorrow. So to understand more about the HIV susceptibility biomarkers, we constructed libraries of immune cells. So we took, we purified immune cells, including CD4 pozit T cells, B cells, and K cells from healthy donors, and we ran, analyzed them by mass spectrometry, and this gave us proteium libraries. And by using these, using, we used these libraries to probe our HIV susceptibility signature. And what we found is that this signature is strongly associated with vaginal, with neutrophils. And this is really surprising. And this is just a heat map down here that shows that a lot of the HIV susceptibility biomarkers strongly associated neutrophils in contrast to CD4 pozit T cells. And in collaboration with Vanessa Poliquin at the University of Manitoba, we've been looking at the relationship between vaginal neutrophils and the microvaginal microbiome. And in the, in the study that we have ongoing right now, we find that women who have, that do not have lactobacillus have higher numbers of cervical vaginal neutrophils than women that do have lactobacillus. So this suggests that HIV risk signature is associated with neutrophils. And we're finding that this, these susceptibility biomarkers are also associated with the microbiome in different populations. So we looked at Canadian women, and we also looked at Kenyan women from two different cohorts. And the Canadian women are local group in Winnipeg. And we find, this is just a volcano plot, showing that these susceptibility biomarkers associated with non-lactobacillus profiles, whereas protective markers associated with Elcrispat, with lactobacillus. And we also looked at Kenyan women as part of the Partners Prep cohort, and this is in collaboration with Jay Langappa, University of Washington. And again, we see when we divide them up by microbiome profiles, the susceptibility biomarkers associated with the loss of lactobacillus. And we also had biopsies from Kenyan women. So we looked at the gene expression of these specific biomarkers, and at the tissue level, they also were related to the vaginal microbiome, where these susceptibility biomarkers were expressed greater in women that did not have lactobacillus. So it suggests that these susceptibility markers are not just, they're not solely attributable to South African women, but also other women in different regions. So to assess the relationship between these biomarkers and viral infection, we partnered with Tom Hope at Northwestern University and looked at virus infection of SIV-challenged Rhesus macaques. So he's developed a system, and this is work by, done, work done by Dan Stee, where they have a fluorescently labeled virus, reporter virus, and they can track where this goes within tissues within the animal. And by using this approach, they took vaginal tissues of SIV-exposed animals and could identify sites of where the virus would infect. And once they identified the sites, they took a biopsy of where the virus was present, and then they took an immediately adjacent biopsy of a place where the virus was not present. They performed RNA-seq analysis on these two tissues. And when we compared our risk signature to these two RNA transcriptome profiles, what we found is that the HIV protective signatures were enriched in places where there was no virus infection, and HIV susceptibility biomarkers associated with places where there was infection. And a lot of these factors are associated with neutrophils. And I, I still don't know what this means. I have discussions with Tom. It can mean one of two things. It could mean that these signatures are present in places where the virus likes to infect. It represents some sort of inflammation process, or that the virus infects these places and turns on these genes to make it a place that is favorable for infection. So to understand the mechanisms of how the microbiome is driving this inflammation, we've been probing the functional pathways of the vaginal bacteria in vivo. And this is work done by Sarah Much in my lab. And, and these are just the different microbiome profiles of women in Capriza 004 from group one to two to three to four, the highly polymicrobial profiles. And you can see underneath here, these are the biological pathways of the bacteria. And what you can see is there, there's a lot of different colors. So as you go from left to right, you see presence of certain colors and red here, and these represent different metabolic and functional pathways. So there seems to be increased functional diversity when you go from lactobacillus crispatus to these polymicrobial groups. And you also see some areas where there are pathways that are similar, such as in pink here. And these are involved in carbohydrate metabolism, energy metabolism, which makes sense because microbial communities need to produce energy in order to survive. So there's a lot of conserve functions, but there's also a lot of diversion functions, which is something we're really interested in. And an important note is that similar taxa profiles does not equal similar functional profiles. So most studies look at the proportion of bacteria, and they make an assumption that these bacteria are doing the same things. And if we look at women who have very similar taxa profiles, these are women who are Gardnerella dominant, we can see that, looking at the KO level functions of these bacterium, there's a lot of pathways that are different between these, these women. So the bacteria are doing things different in these, in vivo. So looking at structural similarity does not, does not necessarily translate to functional similarity. And so we're trying to identify the bad actors or the pathways that cause inflammation. And we're looking at the relationships between, so this, this is a heat map, and we're looking at the relationship of the functional pathways on the Y-axis, and these are the microbial pathways. And on the X-axis here, these are host inflammation pathways. And what we can see here is a lot of white here. So these are, these in white here, these are host pathways that do not seem to be affected by changes in microbial function. And conversely, at the bottom here, these are microbial pathway differences that don't seem to be involved in any changes in inflammatory response. But the ones in dark blue, these are relationships where changes in the functional profile strongly associates with inflammation and host metabolism and innate immunity. And so we've been looking at these specific pathways, and we can see that there's a higher abundance of many proteins involved with innate immunity and inflammation. And this is just one example. One of these pathways is biofilm formation. So proteins involved in this pathway have significant effects on host inflammation. And this is still a work in progress. We're trying to identify which are the key pathways in which may be regulating host inflammation responses. So the next question is, does vaginal microbiome isn't important for HIV prevention for women? So pre-exposure prophylaxis is a strategy being used to reduce new infections in people at a high risk for HIV, including women. And this is where a person takes an antiretroviral drug prior to sexual exposure to protect themselves from HIV infection. And this comes in many forms, including oral prep, gels, vaginal films, vaginal rings, and injectables, which are in clinical trials. However, clinical trials of prep in women have had variable outcomes. So in oral prep, this has ranged from negative 49% to 75%. Topical products, gels have ranged from 0% to 39%, including Capriza 004. And vaginal rings containing dipivirine have had success from 20% to 30%. And the major reason has been attributed to adherence. So women need to be highly adherent and maintain high adherence in order for these products to be protective and successful. And so we asked the question, why is it that women, more so than men, men can miss a pill and still have a good level of protection? Why is it that women need higher adherence? So this study we published last year, we looked at the relationship between the vaginal microbiome and the effectiveness of Tenofvir containing vaginal gel for HIV protection and Capriza 004. And so we grouped women by lactobacillus dominance, women on the left here who had lactobacillus, the protective effectiveness of Tenofvir was 61%, and it was upwards of greater than 75% in women who had high adherence to the gel. And this was much higher than the overall trial, which showed a 39% protection to infection. In contrast, women who did not have lactobacillus, the protective effectiveness was 18%, and this was not overcome with higher adherence. And so there seemed to be a strong relationship between the vaginal microbiome and how well the vaginal gel worked. And to try to look, to identify an explanation, we looked at vaginal drug levels of Tenofvir, and we found that women who had lactobacillus, at least in this sub-analysis, there's about equal proportion of women who had detectable and undetectable levels of drug, whereas women that did not have lactobacillus, there's twice as many women that had undetectable levels of the drug, which suggested there might be some interaction. And I contacted my colleague at the University of Washington, Nikki Klatt, who is developing cult cultures, looking at the interaction between bacteria and antiretrovirals. And she cultured vaginal bacteria with, in the presence of Tenofvir and lactobacillus crispatus and L. enters, there was no interaction. But with Gardnerella vaginalis, there was a rapid depletion of Tenofvir, which quickly metabolized the drug, upwards of 50% within four hours. And this observation was also attributed to other BV-associated bacteria, such as Prevotella, Mobuluncus, and E. coli, which was really striking. And this was presented just a month ago by Nikki, and she's been following up, looking at other frontline drugs used for topical prevention of HIV infection. And she, she's looking at vaginal swabs that were collected from women who have microbial dysbiosis compared to lactobacillus, and cultures them with dipivirine. And what she found is there is a rapid degradation of dipivirine in the presence of swabs from women that have bacterial vaginosis. And similarly, when culturing with Tenofvir, very similar effect to what we, what we saw in our published study. In contrast, TAF, which is another drug used for HIV prevention, it is not associated with any interaction with the bacteria. So this really suggests that frontline drugs for prevention are modified by bacteria. So the question that we've always got is how, how does this relate to oral prep? And there was a sub-analysis done, retrospective analysis done by a colleague of mine, Rene Hefron, who looked at the Partners Prep trial, which tested oral prep, and they saw a high effectiveness of oral prep for prevention in women. And by using Nugent Score, they did an interaction analysis, and they found no significant difference in women who had BV as my Nugent Score and effectiveness of oral prep, which is, which is good news. This may suggest that the mechanism of protection may be different with oral prep than topical strategies. But I think it's important to know, and even Charu brought this up, in our studies and many other studies, there is a, it didn't show up very well on the slide here, but Nugent Score criteria does not capture women, all women who have microbial dysbiosis. And in our studies, we see upwards of 50% underestimation of those who have microbial dysbiosis. So I think that there, there still needs to be some work to be done here, and it's still an open question. So this has important implications for HIV prevention strategies around the world because the prevalence of bacterial vaginosis is quite high in areas with high HIV infection. So these are just different studies. This is work of the Fresh cohort, Tanzanian women, Rwandan women. In purple there are women that have bacterial vaginosis, and in yellow there, women have lactobacillus, in contrast to North American studies where you see a higher proportion of women with lactobacillus. So this is something that we really need to consider in future clinical trials. So in summary, vaginal bacteria associated with mucosal inflammation related to neutrophils and increased HIV acquisition risk. And functional microbiome pathways, we think, are really important for these inflammation responses. And bacteria can affect antiretroviral-based prevention strategies, at least topical strategies for prevention in women. And this underscores the need that we need to incorporate vaginal microbiome studies in prevention trials, and it may have implications for vaccines as well. So we hope that by understanding how the microbiome interacts with the host in these inflammation responses, we can develop better strategies to, to treat bacterial vaginosis and, and slow down new infections. And with that, I'd just like to thank the study participants and fantastic partners, including Capriza and Jay Langappa, the Partners Prep trial, and local study participants in Winnipeg for donating samples for this research, and everyone in my lab, Laura, Alicia, and Michelle and Kenzie for doing a lot of the work that I showed here today. And yes, and all of my partners, I can't list them all, but thank you very much, and I'll take questions.[1534.23][1534.23][applause] And I'm sorry I went two minutes over. Hi, Lisa.
So with the BV, once somebody's been diagnosed and seen with a vaginal evidence, is there a recurrence of BV? Does it change the vaginal environment so that BV is more common afterwards?
So antibiotic usage, metronidazole is a, is a common strategy to treat antibiotics to treat bacterial vaginosis, and it has a very high recurrence rate, so upwards of 40%, going out to, I think, six months. There's a, there's a quite high recurrence rate. And so antibiotics don't seem to work that well. There are some, some clinical trials are looking at combination antibiotics plus reseeding with a probiotic or lactobacillus, and that seems to have a better outcome using combination strategies, but those are still in early clinical trials. Did that answer your question? Sort of?
Yeah. In a secondary, does it, do you see long enough to use to the vaginal, like to the tissue itself? So that it's...
With antibiotic use?
Once you have BV?
Oh, that's a great question. I don't know. That is a fantastic question. And, you know, it's interesting, what is a chicken and the egg? Does the, is it the host, is it the host immune system, which is an inflammatory state which is promoting bacterial vaginosis? And I think that there's cross-talk, so much cross-talk, you can't really determine cause and effect. It may help to promote the anaerobic bacteria, and that's a very good question. But I don't think there's any more questions, so. Oh, there's one more.
I'm, I'm very privileged to be here, and I just, I'm still learning, and I'm an undergrad right now, but I just wanted to have, to like to know a few things. So with the microbiome, and when you observe different shifts of the different microbiota, there's a lot of confounding factors. So like STI or diet, exercise, genetics, sexual preference have been associated with difference, shift in the microbiota? So what, how do you know what's really, what's normal in a, what's a normal microbiome in a certain place? And how do you know the functions of the different microbiomes? Because in some in vitro studies, even though specific bacterial species may make up like less than 1% of the microbiome, you might still have a lot of immunomodulatory phenotypes and pro-inflammatory properties. So how do you know, if you just focus on those that are dominant, but even those ones that might be less than 1% might have like adaptive immune activation?
Yeah, so I think that's a two or three-part question. First question is about sexual behaviors and confounding variables and STIs. And absolutely, STIs, sexual behaviors, receptive anal aid scores is associated with increased BV, multiple partners associated with BV. Those things are all associated with bacterial vaginosis. In this study here, we didn't, at least with the data available, we didn't see any association between sexual behaviors and any baseline variables that could explain it. But there wasn't extensive information on sexual behaviors within, within this study. And your second question about looking at interactions between bacteria and in vitro models, you're absolutely right. You're taking a bug out of, you know, a lab strain or out of, or an isolate and looking at the interaction with a, with a, with a drug or inflammation... at the interaction with a drug or inflammation, and it doesn't really recapitulate everything that happens in vivo, and it's very challenging. There's no good models to grow, you know, grow cold cultures with BV bacteria, and I know people, Jacques Ravel is trying to do that, growing these complex cultures to recapitulate a functioning microbiome with all the metabolites, that sort of thing. Those would be optimal to use in functional assays, but it's just, the technology's not there yet. So right now, we're left with looking at single interactions between bacteria or bacterial products to answer certain questions. But you're absolutely right, it's, that's a limitation. Thank you.
So I think everyone wants to go off and have a drink and party. If there are no further questions, I see no other hands. I would like to thank all three speakers for making time and talking about very, very interesting stuff. And to you, thank you for attending, and enjoy the party, if you're going.